This is week, in the first where we ask, Clary County Probation Department is a central part of criminal justice system. I like to span on that it is a part of what we call public safety. And a lot of times we have criminal justice and we get with Sheriff's Department, but they're all members of the public safety family. There are some figures here that are kind of staggering. Probation staff countywide are responsible for supervising 6,390 adults and juvenile offenders and over 186 juveniles in custody on any given day. So you have a tremendous workload in this county and as we add new judges to the bench in Clary County, your workload will probably even get higher. So we are very well aware of that and we have our support and hopefully to expand our staff.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Cox?
I hear you make a commitment, Mr. Chair, to expand their staff. I thought we had to do that as a group. Yeah, I think that's great. I've had the opportunity, being a Visalia, a police officer with Visaria, a volunteer police officer in Visalia, had the opportunity to be out a couple of times with someone from the probation department who's working the DUI checkpoints now. And the professionalism that he shows has just been great. He's a great representative for probation to be out there and I think you're to be commended for the quality of people. It's the first time I've had opportunity to work hand, well, there was one other time when I was on the ride along, but to work hand in hand with the probation department. Very professional, very polite and doing a great service. I'm glad to see that you've provided that team up to partner with the city and I'm sure that's happening at other places as well. But just having that opportunity to be around someone for several hours, working with them hand in hand, has been a great experience for me. So I, and I'm sure that all of the people that work in probation are the same quality of people. So thank you for the work that you do. I know it's a lot of time behind the scenes, but very appreciated. Thank you.
Supervisor Anis?
I'd also like to thank you so much. So many times, people don't realize exactly what you do and how important you are to following up on these people. When someone gets probation, that's when you guys come in and you have to keep an eye on them, you have to work with them and try to keep these people from going back and becoming incarcerated once again. So I know it's a very difficult job. We're all in this together, we're all a team, and thank you so much for what you do every day to make this county a safer place for all of us. Thank you.
I also like to thank you. I was not aware of what probation entailed until one of my men on the farm had a little incident. And it's hard to believe how many times they have to report to your department. So it's not like someone comes in, the sense to probation is not like you see them every six months, you're constantly interviewing these people. So that's where the workload really starts to stack up, is the constant review of the same people. So thank you very much and we're very proud to proclaim this week as National Probation Week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glad you could join us.
Well, nice chatting with you all.
Especially at this level.
If we were on a ship, that side of the boat's in trouble. I'd like to point out today, as it's very evident, Supervisor Conway and Supervisor Worthley have other commitments for today. Supervisor Conway is in Virginia at a national meeting of the National Supervisors Association. Okay, we're going to move to untimed items. We're going to move to item 28. Mr. Coy?
We're asking the board to consider several things today, take several actions. One is to modify your existing Water Commission ordinance to designate a sitting member of the Board of Supervisors to ask as a non-voting chair of the organization, and also to designate a alternate, a second member of the Board of Supervisors to serve as an alternate chair in the absence of the first one. Also to schedule the first meeting of the Clary County Water Commission for next Tuesday, excuse me, next Monday at 4:00 PM in these board chambers, and to authorize Health and Human Services to submit a Prop 84 pre-application. This is a grant that's designed to fund three things. To a solution to address regional solutions for disadvantaged communities, a nitrate contamination study, and a proposal to fund further Water Commission activities such as gathering data and testing and doing research on water issues. This application has been prepared by a working group that includes two of your water commissioners, Laurel Firestone and Paul Boyer of SelfHelp, who's here today, and also Loonbridge from HHSA.
Thank you, Mr. Coy. You know, oftentimes when we formulate commissions or we reappoint people to the existing commissions or boards that we have, the public really doesn't know who they are. And I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce some of them that are present today. But even more than that, please indulge me, I'd like to give the people in the audience a brief overview of each one of these people. This is a very high, well, it is a highly select group because of their expertise. I'd like to start with Mr. Paul Boyer. Could you please stand? He will be the appointment from my district, District 1. Paul Boyer has worked at SelfHelp Enterprises since 1977 as a community development specialist. He has assisted over 40 communities in developing approximately 60 water and sewer facilities. His work will include working with community groups and the board informing, excuse me, his, this work included working with community groups and boards informing districts assessing water quality and applying for and administering government grants and loans. Mr. Boyer has a strong background in funding application and preparation and grant and loan administration for various programs, including the old EPA Clean Water Grant Program, the USDA Rural Utility Service, California Small Community Sewer Grant Program, California's Safe Drinking and Water Program, Drinking and Water State Revolving Fund Programs, and many others. Mr. Boyer has extensive knowledge on water-related issues in Clary County. And I'm very pleased to have him as a member of the commission.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. We're going to go to District 2. Is Dale here? Okay. Dale Brogan is the appointment from District 2, that's Supervisor Conway's district. He's the general manager of the Delano Early Market Irrigation District, a position he's held since 1988. Mr. Brogan is, also serves as the manager of the Eastside Power Authority. Eastside is a joint power authority consisting of three irrigation districts and three state water districts. He is currently on the Board of Directors for the Agricultural Energy Consumer Association and the Friant Water Political Action Committee. He's a member of the Advisory Committee for both the Friant Water Authority and the Friant Power Authority. He sits on the Agriculture Advisory Board of the Southern California Edison Company. Mr. Bruce George, who is here representing District 3, Supervisor Phil Cox is district. Bruce George has over, could you stand, please, Bruce, so everybody knows who you are? Bruce George has over 30 years of experience in the Central Valley water. He is the water administrator and manage, in water administration and management for 20 years in the Clary Lake bed area for J.G. Boswell Company. Bruce is currently employed as the general manager of the Cuyahoga Delta Water Conservation District and the water master of the Cuyahoga St. John's River Association, serving in this capacity for the last 10 years. His experience in water administration and the knowledge of the Central Valley water systems are extremely valuable to the Clary County Water Commission. Thank you, Bruce. District 4, Chris Kapheim. Good to see you, Chris. Chris is the general manager of Alta Irrigation District in the central San Joaquin Valley, a position he's held since 1983. So we have a lot of experience and they have, for many years, they've accumulated this experience. Alta Water District encompasses 130,000 acres in Clary, Fresno, and Kings County. Mr. Kapheim is currently the chair of the ACWA Water Management Committee, a member of the ACWA Groundwater Committee, and an alternate to the ACWA Legislative Committee. Chris has been an active political, active in political issues ranging from economic summits for the San Joaquin Valley to political action committees. Chris is currently chairperson and the founder of the Kings River Political Action Committee. Chris is active in water conservation and water quality issues by, issues by helping formulate and being a member of the Agricultural Water Management Council. Thank you, Chris. Dennis Keller is an appointment, excuse me, I've skipped over one of the people who's here, District 5. Richard Schaefer, affectionately known as Dick Schaefer, is the principal and consulting civil engineer for R.L. Schaefer and Associates, and he is also the water master for the Tulie River Association. He is responsible for water scheduling, storage operations, diversions, and flood release operations. Dick has designed and constructed canals and pipelines, pipeline distribution systems, flood control works, and other agency facilities. Dick is a registered civil engineer specializing in water rights, hydrology, water distribution systems, canals, domestic water systems, well waters, drainage systems, and flood works. He has 45 years of professional civil engineering experience in both public and private sectors. He's our Tulie watershed man. Thank you very much, Dick. At large appointees are, one is Mr. Dennis Keller. Dennis is a civil engineer, civil sanitary engineer, and has served in various projects including completion of water and liquid waste supplements, excuse me, very prod, various projects including the completion of the water and liquid waste supplement to the Clary County General Plan. He has prepared numerous environmental impact reports and plans for water, wastewater treatment and disposal facilities. Mr. Keller is, has extensive experience working with community service districts and public utility districts. He has coordinated with state, county, and local agencies on loans and grant programs. Dennis has been involved in the design and construction of irrigation structures on the California Aqueduct along, along with designing, construction of domestic water wells. Mr. Keller's wide background of experience will be an asset to this commission. Now, I only got a couple left, so please bear with me. Laurel Firestone, at large appointee. Laurel Firestone is co-director and the attorney at law for the Visalia nonprofit Community Water Center, whose mission is to act as a catalyst for change and for community-driven water solutions through education outreach, organizing, and advocacy in the South San Joaquin Valley. Ms. Firestone earned her Juris Doctorate at Harvard Law School, and she's been active in this area for several years, and is part of the center's ongoing effort to help small water committees to secure clean, affordable water supplies. Mr. Watkins, appointee at large, Keith Watkins is the farm manager for B-Sweet Citrus and Fowler, is currently serving as the president of the Clary County Farm Bureau Board of Directors. He's served on the Farm Bureau Board of Directors for the last 10 years. In his role as the Farm Bureau President, Keith has represented, is, represents more than 2,800 Clary County farmers and ranchers that depend on reliable and affordable water. Keith has served as a director, has served as a director of the Coala Water District and the South Tulie Independent Ditch Company. Mr. Watkins has extensive experience with exchange contractors on the San Joaquin River. Thank you, Keith. The last member of our water commission was named yesterday by TCAG, and that member is Bob Link. Bob Link's is the, sits on the Visalia City Council and is one of the co-owners of Link Clothing and Visalia. So by going over the resumes of these people, you can tell they have a great deal of expertise in the water. Probably the people who have the least amount of expertise are the elected people. So that's why we chose to go out to the, the general public for that water expertise. It's going to be a very important aspect to Clary County. This advisory committee will report to the Board of Supervisors, and they're going to be very important on what they find as to the growth and the direction of growth that we have in Clary County. The future of Clary, not only Clary County's growth, the state of California, as Governor Schwarzenegger reiterated yesterday, is the availability of water and water quality. So we on the Board of Supervisors take this board to be a very serious endeavor, and we feel that with all the expertise that we have on this board, we can come up with some solutions to our current water problems and look at our future water needs. So thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for serving on this commission.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before, I'd be glad to make the motion to approve this item. I want to commend the Chair for his diligence in putting a committee together or a commission together of such caliber. I usually add up the years of experience, but this is too many to add. And I've, and I've added up a lot of numbers before. But I, I think this, this is going to give Clary County a very hands-on position and opportunity to help with the water situation we have. Many years, we've talked about growth and, and before you can have growth, and before you can put people somewhere, you have to have water. Can't sustain life without water. So I think this commission is going to serve a vital role in Clary County's future growth. You'd mentioned that, but it's so important that people realize you can't grow without water. If our water supply goes away, we're pretty much dead. So I want to commend the Chair on his diligence in putting together such a fine commission, and I'm, I'm proud to see such a good group of folks put together. And I guess your job starts today. No, it doesn't start today, it starts, what, next week? Next week. So congratulations to all of you, and we really look forward to many great things for you. And I hope that we've also funded this commission, Mr. Chair, and given them some tools, you're smiling, given them some tools to, you know, if they need to go to Washington, DC, if they know, need to travel, that we've given them some tools to accomplish those things.
Oh, Mr. Cox, I've, I guess I funded the probation department, I might as well fund this one, too.
So again, glad to make the motion to approve.
We do need to name a supervisor. I'm assuming it'll be Supervisor Ashida?
It's in the resolution.
In the resolution?
And the resolution states that I will chair the water commission, will sit on the water commission, the Board of Supervisors, and Mr. Anis would be the alternate that sits on the water commission.
I amend my motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second that. And then I'd also like to say that I'm very, very pleased with this, too, because growing up in Terabella and seeing the Friant Current Canal come in, knowing the many problems it faces in the communities like Lindsay and Orange Cove and Terabella, it's not just farming, it's people. And not only that, the water quality issue out there. So there's so many things that go into this aspect that we need to be studying. So many people know, need to know that that well they've got at their place, is that water drinkable? What's in it? They've got too many nitrates, has it got uranium, has it got arsenic? So this water commission is so important and so vital to our valley as we grow, because without water, we, we won't, we won't get to where we need to be in the future, especially on the east side of our valley, which is so crucial to our growth and to stay off of our farmland. So very, very important, and I'm very glad to second this motion.
Thank you. One of the, not one, but many of the reasons we're forming, we formed this commission is that the state of California is now pushing for regional water plants. Well, it's very difficult to be a member of a regional water plant if you do not know what your own water issues are in your own county. So that's why we're pushing forward. The other major reason is the San Joaquin River settlement is going to have a dramatic impact on Clary County. So, and then the governor is talking about new water storage on the San Joaquin River. So there are a lot of stars that have lined up for us to be at this position right now. So with that, we have a motion, and please cast your vote. The motion has passed unanimously. Thank you very much for coming, and we have a lot of work ahead of us. Let's bring it back to the board on our consent calendar.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item 24 for separate consideration, please. Motion to approve consent calendar items 2 through 27 with the emphasis of 24.
Second.
Mr. Chair. I was just asking if Mr. Chair would like to pull item 26 as well. This is the item that you have had a lot of effort on it that way.
Let's pull item 26, too.
So I amend my motion, pull items 24 and 26.
Okay, please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item 24.
Chair, make this brief, I notified staff yesterday that I wished, or desired to pull this item. As the board knows, Sequoia Field has been of high interest to myself since coming, a member of this board, and we continue to underuse Sequoia Field, and I would just like to continue this item to give staff the opportunity to actually charge for these tie-down, these portable hangar spaces, what it actually costs us. If you look at your packet, we have a few hangar lease agree, actually, it would be 24 and 25, I messed up. We have two hangar lease agrees, agreements in here, $15 a month, which would be $180 per year. We spent more money on our attorney looking at the contract and preparing the paperwork than we're actually charging for these sites. So I feel this is a gift of public funds, would like to continue this item, or these two items, 24 and 25, so that staff could re-figure the actual cost of what it costs us to prepare the paperwork and provide these lease spaces at the airport. It's as plain and simple as that, I'd like to postpone these items so it can be refigured.
Mr. Chair?
I would agree with Supervisor Cox. The current rent on the tie-down spaces is $15 a month per slot. By comparison, on the other end of the spectrum, Visalia charges 40. Beginning July 1, Aries Consulting is doing a study for us on the Sequoia Field site, doing an economic development study. Included in their study is an analysis of lease rates within the region, not just within the county, so that we can do an adjustment in our rates to bring them up to be competitive with what everybody else is doing. I would say right now at $15 a month, I think we're being taken advantage of. The study will not be completed until mid-fall. However, the current lease agreements allow for adjustments in the rent on a month-to-month basis, but we would welcome the chance to come back and discuss this further.
Mr. Chair, I don't like to waste a whole lot of time on $180 a year items. It's just the principle of deal that we have, things like this out there that we need to be paying better attention to. So seeing that the other leases are on a month-to-month and we can increase them, I think we just need to continue this until we get our, our report back and we can actually set reasonable rates.
Counsel, since we've approved item 25, how can we go back and?
You're going to have to go back in and make a motion to rescind your earlier vote on number 25 and continue.
So moved. So moved.
Moving seconded, please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to continue items 24 and 25, to such, the date uncertain.
Second, Dan.
Moving seconded, please cast your vote. Vote is approved unanimously. Thank you. I would like to thank Mr. Hash for stepping up here for item 26. It's been a, a subject in my district for quite a while, and finally able to do something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the board, Henry Hash, Resource Management Agency. We also want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your continued support on this and similar issues, and I think it would have been difficult to do it without your support. We are pleased to inform the board that we received recently another $478,500 of grant for this transportation, I mean, for this traffic signal right here, and we are very excited. Mr. John Brew will give you more details, but this is something that really was needed for a long time. We hope to have this all in place within 18 months, hopefully sooner. One thing that your board may note that really for 10, 12, even further 14, 15 years, we were not active in putting traffic signals in. We are very active, we are very aggressive in getting the grants. We are planning to install three. We have already started within the next 12, 15 months, because they're all grant money is over a million dollars. So thanks again for your support, as well as Mr. Brew. Mr. Brew, if you want to give any details, Mr. Chairman, is any details you would like to have, or?
Good morning. Chairman Ashida, members of board, this is just a request that your board approve the installation of, before we stop this location. This is, this is one of the three locations that your board previously approved, and the other two locations here, the city of Exeter and Clary. Is there any question I can answer you?
This is a temporary measure until the actual signal is designed and placed.
This intersection has the highest accident rate on the road between Visalia and Exeter.
I do have a question. Are there, are there intersections along Spruce that are in the same category?
We have one that we're looking at.
Because I, you know, not even representing that area, I receive telephone calls from folks that travel Spruce that are wondering why there is not more control on Spruce than there is.
There's one location that, that we are looking at, currently looking at, it's on Spruce and 256. That's a location.
That's the one.
That's the one that we're looking at, and staff is reviewing that location.
Thank you. And when you're looking at Spruce, would you please look at the railroad track crossing? It's so rough now, I think we're going to have a problem in the winter, where cars may lose control. And I don't know what, we have arrangements with San Joaquin Railroad on.
The track itself, the plankings, that's, that's the jurisdiction of the railroad company, but the approach to the track, that's, that's the county we, we have.
It's the tracks.
Yeah, the tracks, and that's, we can't do too much on that. However, we can, you know, we can notify the railroad company about the condition of that track.
Would you please do that? Okay. Thank you.
Move to approve?
Seconded.
Moving seconded, cast your vote. Moving seconded, cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Public comments. Anybody wishing to address this board on matters that are under its jurisdiction and not on the agenda? Done, we're going to close the public comment period. Supervisor matters, Supervisor Cox.
Last week, we had our, on Friday, had the first gang, multi-agency gang task force. We had 65 attendance. Newspaper said there were 40, there were actually 65 people who attended that task force. It was very productive. Our next meeting is August 16th at 1:00 PM. We had representatives from every city, every police agency, every law enforcement agency, with one exception, throughout the county. And so we're very pleased with the turnout. The response was very positive from those who had attended. And the committee is looking and splitting into two, two groups. One being the law enforcement group handling prevention. And the second group would be a group that would split off and do intervention. We had representatives from community groups, from community-based organizations, nonprofits, religious organizations were present. So very well attended. We're looking forward to making a difference in Tulare County over the next several months here as we get together and decide which direction we're going to focus our efforts in. So very well attended. I wanted to thank everyone who was there. And it was just a very good, positive meeting. Mr. Chair, I think you were there as well.
Could you give us a little update on the loop?
The loop is doing very well. The county has, in the first 20 days, had some 546 riders, I believe. The city of Visalia averages about 120 riders a day on their loop bus. Right now, Ivanhoe is sending in between 28 and 30 children per day on the bus. Most of them come in on the first bus of the day and leave on about the next to last bus in the evening. So it's very successful. We have children from Goshen and Ivanhoe attending all the community centers. They're just not congregated in one. The hope was that they would spread out and get to make new friends in their, within their school district, and it appears to be working very well. And if you remember the newspaper, I am not beyond bribing children to get on the bus with ice cream.
But you have to get them and say, give them the ice cream and shut the door.
I don't really have anything out on this week.
Okay. Yesterday Supervisor Anis and I attended the ceremony we had on Road 96. The first Major R, we're servicing a mile of road, which was funded by our Major R program. So that was the first major project that we've been able to accomplish as a county under Major R. I think we've talked enough about the Water Commission. When we have our joint meeting, I believe next week, we're also inviting the Flood Control Commission. Because the first time in many years, we have some money available for the Flood Control Commission to work with. And this would involve Fraser, Strathmore Creek Drainage, and White River. So we're going to actively put the Flood Control Commission back to work. Next commission that we're reactivating or changing its direction will be the Public Facilities Commission. Their charge in the past has been financing of public facilities. Will probably change their direction into master planning or looking at feasibility studies of where we're going to locate our public facilities, such as the county campus, fire stations, police stations. So we can have some ideas when we impact, when we initiate our impact fees. Cities and our residents will know where the monies will go from those impact fees. So we're going to be very busy in Tulare County for the foreseeable future. And I'd like to thank you for your attendance today. And counsel, we have a need for closed session.
Yes, we do have a need for closed session. We're going to cancel, and they're listed on your agenda, except we're going to cancel item A. Items B, C, and D, we're going to have items B, and there will be a report out on that. We're going to have items C, D, and E. They're listed on your agenda as closed session, but they're listed on your addendum as a closed session for the redevelopment agency. We will be sitting in those closed sessions as the redevelopment agency. The board will have another closed session in item F, which is to consider the public employee performance evaluation for the position of county administrative officer. And I understand that we do not have a need for items, closed sessions, items G and H concerning labor negotiations. So there will be a report out.
Thank you. We'll now return to closed session.
It's Item B, okay. This is Julia Roberts. Okay. Let me check and see what I wrote down. This is Julia J. Roberts, Chief Deputy County Counsel. I have an announcement to make on Item B on the Tulare County Board of Supervisors Agenda for July 17th. It pertains to pending existing litigation in the lawsuit of Valley Citizens for Water versus County of Tulare et al. Real parties in interest: Quea River Rock Company et al. Tulare County Superior Court Case Number 05-215123. The Board has authorized the County of Tulare to seek appellate review in the form of an